I'm Bob Bentley, I'm your town moderator and I'll be running the show tonight. I'd like to start off with our National Anthem sung by sophomore Haley Spiwakowski. And then we'll go right into his allegiance and then we'll have a little more silence My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, each and every power which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Again, I'd like to thank Haley Spiwakowski for that very nice job with the National Anthem. I'd like to do a number of introductions and starting on my left, your right, I've got the superintendent of schools, Scott Neef, and the chief financial officer, Brad Brothers, and Jim O'Brien as the chair. Jim, if you could introduce your committee.
Andy Carterelli, Stephanie Clarity, Andrew Solowato, and Gina Murray in the committee.
Thank you. And the selectmen, Mr. Robertson.
Dave Robertson.
Sarah Hewens. Thank you. Helen Maroney, Ron Clark, Alan Dunham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we go any further, I'd like to recognize one of our members. This is Helen Maroney's last official act, a member of the Carver Board of Selectmen. She's served faithfully now for six years and we wish her luck with her future endeavors and thank her for the hard work she's done to the citizens of downtown Carver.
Continuing on, to my left, your right, town council, Greg Corvo. Town administrator, Michael Nolanoski. To my right, your left, we have town clerk, Lynn Doyle. We have finance director, Meg Lemay. We have our treasurer, tax collector, Laurie Henault. Jack Angley is the capital outlay committee and he's going to introduce his capital outlay committee.
Yes, Gina Kavicki. And superintendent Scott Neef fills in sometimes too, which we're very thankful for. Bob Merritt, Franklin Peck, Mr. Ron Clark with an E, and yours truly, Jack Angley.
Thank you. And finance committee, the chair of which is Richard Buck. You can introduce your committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. To my right, your left, we have vice chair, Mark Thompson, Kate Banfield, Helen Jermaine, John Carter, Bill Zuggen, and we also have members George Callahan and Joe Patton.
Okay. For those who didn't see it on the way in, there is the warrant for this meeting as well as a number of handouts which are going to be referred to during the discussion are available on the table just outside the auditorium. If you haven't got one or gotten a copy, you should go outside and get one because we are going to be referring to quite a few of the issues in there. Anyone who needs hearing assistance, there are hearing assistants available at the back of the auditorium. If you're not from Carver or not registered to vote in Carver, we ask that you sit in the back section of the auditorium, any of the upper bleachers. Only registered Carver voters should be sitting in the front section. Just to briefly review my rules, once an article has been made and seconded, the floor is open for discussion. You'll be able to speak on any article. I ask that each speaker can find their comments to no more than one time on the same article and keep it to no more than three minutes per time. The maker of the motion is allowed more time if necessary and clearly if asked a question through the moderator, people will be able to speak more than twice. Once you have spoken, in the interest of equal opportunity for debate, I will select anyone who has not spoken previously on an article before I will call on you again. I ask that you only speak through the moderator, stay on topic to the article being discussed, and respect differing opinions from your own.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Belvin, what's your point of order?
Mr. Moderator, your rules were voted down at the last town meeting. This town meeting, there is no rules assigned in the first article, thus our bylaws say that the rules are Robert's Rules of Order, thus your rules are nullified.
Mr. Moderator?
My rules, as I read them, are...
Mr. Moderator, in response to the previous speech...
Mr. Dunham.
If you've gone to the, if you went to the town website where it had the warrant for the town meeting, it also had another subcategory in there that said the rule, procedures for Carver Town Meeting. It had clearly stated at the top of that after the title, it said, "These will become the rules of the town meeting unless, prior to the meeting, someone notifies the moderator in writing of a problem with the rules." Mr. Moderator, I ask you, did anyone present to you in writing a specific thing saying that those rules were a problem?
No one did.
On the court, I challenge that. Mr. Moderator, I challenge that due to the fact that I did file a protest about the rules in there. That was one of my protests that I did. And therefore, our town bylaws must be adhered to due to the fact that we vote the rules in. It is not dictating...
Excuse me, Mr. Belvin. I, by law, am allowed to run the meeting as I see fit. As I see fit is following the rules that I've explained.
So our bylaws mean nothing, Mr. Moderator? Our bylaws don't mean anything. A violation is $300 per incident.
Town council?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, for the benefit of the meeting, the announcement made by the moderator at the beginning establishes his rules of order for the meeting. Under the Massachusetts general laws, the moderator is the chief presiding officer of this meeting and is, as a matter of law, entitled to establish rules of order. What you've heard earlier were the moderator's rules of order for the meeting, which he is conclusively, as a matter of law, entitled to establish. And therefore, these, in my opinion, are the rules of the meeting and must be adhered to. And anybody who refuses to adhere to the rules of the moderator is subject to removal at his order.
Mr. Moderator, may I speak? The Secretary of State's office differs from that because it clearly states through the Secretary of State's office that the rules are our bylaws, not what the moderator wants. If you'd like to go to that website, I have it right here that you can take a look at. I think the Secretary of State knows the law.
I fully believe the town council is giving his opinion, I totally run with that. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion pertaining to the procedures of tonight's meeting, if I may?
You may.
All right. I hope that the moderator be allowed to call the outcome of any article requiring a two-thirds vote by voice vote.
Do I hear a second?
All right. In a way of explanation, this motion is being made to help streamline the process and not require hand votes when there are only a very limited number of votes on the opposing side. If there is any doubt, the moderator will immediately go to a hand count. But the purpose of this is if we have a vote, we have a lot of them, that require two-thirds and there's only one or two people that vote against it, then it's kind of silly to take up the time of this town meeting having to go ahead and do the card count for something that's that clear cut.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Belvin.
That is not, that shouldn't be done. We need, the voice vote is not always right, as was present this last year. So the card count is very important on articles, so therefore we should shoot this down, vote no on this, please.
Is there any further discussion? By the way, if anybody is interested in participating in the discussion, I ask that you begin moving to the microphone before the other individuals stop and finish his speech. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion to allow the moderator, allow, move that the moderator be allowed to call the outcome of any article requiring a two-thirds vote by voice vote. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All right. Can I have the fellows come forward? The motion does not pass 121 to 119. What is that? Excuse me? One for what? 121 to 119 means that the noes prevail.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to the annual town meeting warrant. Article one. This is the annual town report to act on the reports of various town offices printed in the annual town report 2017 and to gather reports of any committee here to form, chosen and acted thereon. We wish any special committee not submitting a report which is required to do so unless otherwise voted, and to establish any new committee or take any other action related thereto. Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, I know that the town approved the 2017 annual report.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Mr. Belvin.
I'll let you vote on that. I have another motion. You want that now?
There's a motion on the floor. No further discussion. All in favor of Article one is presented, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, so voted unanimously. Article two.
Mr. Moderator, point of order. I just said I had a motion for Article one. Can I read it?
Article one was just voted.
Right. And I just, and I just told you I have a motion for Article one. Can I present it? That's what I said. I was clear. Was I not clear?
Oh, you weren't.
No, you weren't.
So can we reconsider this article? So I can make this motion?
Is that a motion to reconsider?
It's a motion to reconsider.
Is there a second? Okay, motion's been made and seconded. A motion to reconsider is to reopen discussion on Article one. If you, motion to reconsider only opens the motion to discussion, it doesn't pass or fail the article, it only opens it back up for discussion. Is there any further discussion on reconsideration? Seeing none, all those in favor of reconsidering, let me state, if you favor reconsidering, you're opening the floor back up to discussion of Article one. If you're opposed to opening it up to Article one, you're not in view of reconsideration. All those in favor of reconsideration of Article one signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The noes have it. Article two, supplemental appropriations for fiscal 2018.
I hope that the town make the fiscal year 2018 budget transfers shown below from the landfill post closure receipts reserve for appropriation, $19,675, from road machinery reserve, $151.77, from the receipts reserve for appropriations state aid to library, $1,381.24, a total of $21,208.1 cents to be transferred to the town's current snow and ice deficit. The purpose of this article is, we currently have a deficit, snow and ice, and the town's policy is to take care of those deficits within the state fiscal year and not defer it, so that if we were to defer it, it would be a hit on the town's free cash, which we do not want to do, and we would also have to raise it on the tax rate recap. So this is taking current available funds and taking care of our current deficit.
Okay, do I hear a motion? That was motion. All right, do I hear a second? Voter selectmen vote?
Voter selectmen voted 5-0 to recommend.
Finance committee vote?
Finance committee voted 8-0 to...
Any further discussion on Article two? All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, so voted unanimously. Article three, allocation of funds from fiscal 2018 free cash.
Mr. Moderator, I know that the town approved Article three as set forth in the warrant.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. ...
Mr. Belvin. Sorry. Let's let the town administrator explain this first.
So if I could, Mr. Moderator, members of the town meeting, I want to call your attention to the packet that you received outside when you came into town meeting. What that includes, the first eight or nine pages is a kind of state of the town that kind of provides where our finances are and some of the work that's been happening over the last year, just to give you a more of a detailed update, followed by a brief summary of the articles that you're going to hear from me tonight. Also on page nine and 10 is the town's financial policies, which I have behind me, basically a summary of the objective. And I bring this to your attention every town meeting because, town meeting, the voters, the taxpayers have asked the board of selectmen and demanded the board of selectmen manage the town in a financially responsible way. I think, as we all know, we are not some of the affluent towns around us, so we have to live within our means. And the summary that you see behind me really, really covers that with the objective. And I highlight a few things there. And that is for the board of selectmen to demonstrate sound fiscal management of Carver's taxpayers' resources. That's the first thing that's underlined in every decision that they make, every decision that department heads make, follow this objective, which includes making sure we have a sustainable townwide budget. And what that means is making sure that there's money available next year to run the services that we're doing this year. We don't go forward and put forward a service or a project that we can't afford or it's going to meet the layoffs or to some type of major budget structural changes the next year. We're always looking 10 years ahead, always trying to figure out what we can do to live within our means. Not unlike what every one of you do with your own personal finances. You know, every 20 to 30 years, when you have to plan to replace your roof, you make sure that you put aside those funds for it or you go out and borrow a small loan to make sure that roof gets done. Because if you don't replace the roof, you're going to have leaks. If you have leaks, you're going to have mold. If you have mold, you're going to have more damage to your house and you're going to lose the value of the house. I bring that up as just an analogy as to what we do here on behalf of you, the taxpayers. And again, the last piece is there, what we can afford within our known projected revenues. Part of our forecast is we are able to look ahead for those 10 years and determine what, under Prop 2 and a half, what our new growth is going to be. And every year, that's how we live. And that's what we've been doing for the last four or five years since these policies have been enacted, and it's allowed us to, you know, manage your money very well. Speaking directly to Article three, which is behind me on the screen now, has three different, has several different items that are in here. Now, this is an allocation of free cash. What is free cash? Free cash is, in essence, it's an odd government term that the state makes us use, but there's nothing free about it. What this is, is this is money that we did not spend from the previous year that was budgeted, that was put into a budget, that we did not spend, or it's additional revenue that came into the town that we did not anticipate. And that can be through interest, that can be through additional licenses and permits, that can be through additional meals tax. Whatever that additional funds is, that plus the money we didn't spend combined equal this terminology of free cash. Free cash is considered a one-time money because it's not known that you're going to have that next year. So therefore, tied into our policies is we can only use free cash on one-time expenses so that there's no reliance on the next year that if this money's not available, we don't have it, that we're going to have to cut some program. So with that, it's been broken down to $857,983 is designated in these seven items. And I want to quickly go through these, and some of them I'll expand a little bit more detail. The first one, Town and School Special Education Reserve Fund. This is a fund we put together, we started this last year at town meeting, to provide some mid-year funding relief for special education. Special education is one of the items that's very difficult for the school to project what that expense is going to be mid-year. They can look at what they spent last year, they can understand the kids that they have that receive special services and what those tuitions are and what that's going to be. So they can project what their existing population cost is going to be, and they're required to do that. This money covers when you have a student move in mid-year or right before or after the budget's been done, that may have some extenuative circumstances. Sometimes these circumstances can require the town to pay up to $200,000 per child, depending upon what the situation is. It's a requirement we have to pay. If we don't set up a fund like this, then what happens is the school mid-year has to figure out how to fund it. I will tell you that under the leadership of Scott Neef, the superintendent, and Brad Brothers, that they have a very tight budget and they don't have any type of slush fund or wiggle rule within their budget to handle a child that Carver Bay has to come into a situation like that. Therefore, we need this fund available to do that. This is a really good use of free cash, and it's the second year we've done that. The next item is townwide snow and ice. We just passed a little bit of money in Article two to cover that, and this is an additional $100,000. We were doing really good through February this year. Weather was great. Everybody was outside at 70 degrees sunning themselves. And then, we got hit by nor'easter, 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 and nor'easter. And obviously, we exceeded our budget for that, so that's what that item is. The next item is a DEP water line extension due to the North Carver landfill. Although I don't read some of the blogging that goes on on Facebook, I have been, had many people tell me about this, and what I've heard, and again, I haven't correctly read this because when I read Facebook, it's only one side of the story, it doesn't give both sides of the story. But what I've heard, I want to classify as fake news. And let me tell you why. Is because this project, the North Carver landfill, is a project that was owned by the town and the town is responsible for any environmental cleanup and monitoring for that because it's our landfill. The town previously, which has since been let go, had a consultant that was running some treatment facility tied into the southern end of this facility, and after some review of electric records, we found out that they were billing us for work that wasn't being done. We're currently in an investigation on that. But what happened is we then went to DEP and said, hey, I had to get rid of these guys because they were billing us for stuff they shouldn't have been, they weren't even doing. And therefore, we needed to close down the plant. And oh, by the way, what they were trying to treat was not even something that their equipment was able to treat, which is dioxide. Dioxide is a chemical that's found in hide, if you will, or any type of nitrogen charge, and it helps make bubbles. But what happens is, in high concentrations, that material is very hard to clean up. So the system they were using wasn't even covered... So the system they were using wasn't even covering that. So we have an order from DEP that we have to go through and we have to remediate that, and part of that is to extend the water line onto Plymouth Street. We're not extending the water line for the benefit of the North Carver Water District, which was one quote. We're not doing this because we want to. We're doing it because we have to, because we're going to get fined if we don't. And what that means is that this money allows for the town to run the water line, and just so you know, previously, we were paying over a hundred thousand dollars a year for the pumping system that wasn't working. This allows the town to install this water line and pay for the connection to the two houses that have been tested according to DEP, that have a level that's slightly below, and again, slightly below what the minimum requirement is. So we have not exceeded the requirement, but it's below. But having said that, in order, of course, to close down the facility, the DEP is requiring us to extend this water line. Let me address another one of the fake news issues. There, no one is going to be charged a betterment for this. When the government body extends a water line, the government body pays for it. In this situation, this is not something that's going to cause a betterment. It does not require anyone to connect to it. What it does do is by doing this, we will connect the two houses that fall into that category from DEP if they want us to. We have to provide the option, we have to provide the water line, it has to be there. Again, there's no betterment requirements, there's no mandatory connection, this is not a coup of the North Carver Water District, which I've heard too, to go into Pine City, that's just not happening. This is clearly for a DEP requirement, and, you know, I've heard that there are people that have called DEP, and I've actually got a response back from DEP that they have told people that this is a requirement and that's what's necessary to happen. So again, we're trying to make sure that Facebook doesn't become where everyone gets their information because it's always inside it, and that's why I'm taking probably a prolonged way to kind of dissect this because a lot of what's being posted up there is not true. This is a requirement that we need to do. Moving on briefly, the next item is the permitting GIS tracking software, and this is for all of our permitting offices as well as the assessing office, so we can take all our paper records and put those into electronic format, which also allows our inspectors to be out in the field and be able to have all the data they need to do their job, so this is to upgrade that system. Following that, there's the fire squad truck, this is supplemental appropriations. You'll see this later on in the warrant. When the three engines were purchased before, we had set aside thirty thousand dollars out of that amount to cover rehab of an older engine. Because that older engine doesn't have a twenty-year life cycle, we couldn't use that thirty thousand dollars for that, so we had to go forward and use that in a different way. Then we have the summer recreation program. Last year, town meeting approved fifteen thousand dollars to start this program. We've had our athletic director for the school has been one of the spearheads of this along with the recreation committee, and they've had a lot of success in running some programs this summer, and we want to continue that. And then finally, we have our unfinished North Carver Water District supplemental funding. This is tied into our capital plan, this is to pay for the debt tied into the North Carver Water District. The North Carver Water District does produce enough revenue to cover its operational expenses, but this is where the town comes in to subsidize them to pay for the debt service, and this has been going on for at least the last four years or five. So with that, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Moderator, that is a summary of the allocation of free cash as requested by town meeting's approval.
Thank you. Mr. Belvin?
Mr. Moderator, I have a motion. I motion to separate Article Three to be separated by each letter as printed in the warrant, and each letter to be discussed and voted separately.
Motion has been made, seconded to vote Article Three by eight from G individually. We'll take action on the motion to amend.
Will you discuss, Mr. Moderator? May I discuss my motion?
Sure. Mr. Belvin?
All right. The reason why this motion is here is that it sees through this article, we bundle a whole bunch of stuff into one thing, to one vote. It sounds really good to do that, but there's individual topics here that need to be discussed further, and keep the public just to focus. If we focus on one each time, we get through it, it'll move a little quicker than to go back and forth with different articles on this one here. All right, that's why I want them separated into different ones, because I have some questions on these, I don't think we're giving them.
Is there any discussion on the amendment? Okay, see, no discussion, no movement in mics for discussion on the amendment. The amendment is to take Article Three by individual letter and discuss each individual letter. All those in favor of breaking the article down like that signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The chair believes a no is happy. So the discussion now goes to Article Three as a whole. I didn't get the Board of Selectmen's recommendation.
Our Board of Selectmen recommended this Article Five-Zero.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee voted to recommend seven.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to clarify, my name is Kim Shea, I'm at the 148 Plymouth Street, and I'd like to clarify a few things as far as fake news goes. As far as DEP water line extension due to North Carver landfill, this warrant is saying that they want to extend this water line from 169 Plymouth Street all the way down to Pine City Street. Now, this is being driven by a notice of violation that was issued to our town on November 1st of 2017 for violations due to the North Carver landfill. Now, I had a very nice conversation with Angela Gallagher from the Massachusetts Department Environmental Protection, who also happens to be the project manager for this project. I had a lot of questions for her, and she clarified many things for me. You told the truth, Mike, but you didn't tell the whole truth. And this is where I have a problem, because according to all the reports online and everything we've read, from our consultants and from the Massachusetts Department Environmental Protection, inside the five-hundred-foot radius is what is called the critical exposure pathway due to this contaminant, the one-four dioxide. Two homes are affected, they had detectable levels of this contaminant. It's only those two homes that the DEP is requiring water to be fed to. When I asked her specifically about my well and where I'm located, I'm located, my house is probably about a half mile across of where this well is, she specifically said, oh, good, you're east, because we're more concerned with where the aquifer is flowing, and that is going north. Now, I understand the need for putting in water, especially for well situations, and if this motion went to cover that five-hundred-foot buffer zone, I would be the first one standing up here supporting it. But based on my conversations...
Where is...
Is that five-hundred? Yes. Based on the conversation I had with her, she explained to me, and I know about this, this is not my area of expertise, but I do environmental work. They start with the five-hundred-foot radius, they continue monitoring those wells, if they find detection levels above their action level, then they'll go another five-hundred-foot radius. This is how they track the pool. Right now, I was told by this project manager that wells going east are not considered in this area, she would not go far as to say that we have nothing to worry about because obviously, there's always something to worry about. My issue here is nowhere in this warrant does it say that we're not going to be charged betterments, that we're not going to be charged hookup fees. So if you'd said that, if it was put in the warrant, because from the past, people have been told that they were not going to be charged betterments, and they were. This is not a project that we should be spending money on, and I understand the concern in the what-if, but even according to the DEP, if we don't have enough information, we haven't evaluated everything appropriately, and their concern and the only requirement they want for town water is for those two properties on Plymouth Street, and I believe it's 162 and 164. So that's the whole truth. And this is why we should be separating these articles out, because there's things in this article that I think we need, and we need to vote for, but I can't vote for it because we're spending money and you're putting people on Plymouth Street in a precarious situation, and it's not appreciated. And, you know, at the end of the day, our town elected officials talk about transparency, and they talk about wanting to have conversations and people involved. If my well is considered potentially contaminated or potential as a threat, why were we not brought into this conversation? Why was nobody along Plymouth Street up to Pine City invited by our elected officials, by our Board of Health, to have a discussion about what's going on in this landfill? I had to read about this in a warrant. I'm disgusted right now, absolutely disgusted that this is how this town is running. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator and members of the town meeting, a couple of things that I want to
point out. In order for the town to install a betterment, the town actually has to ask town meeting and the voters to approve a betterment. There's nothing in the article requesting a betterment. When it's a DEP initiative like what's here because it's to fix an environmental issue, then that's why the town is picking, that's why it's proposed for the town to pick this up, so the town doesn't get fined for not moving forward with the cleanup on this issue. Secondly, as in the correspondence with DEP, DEP actually clarifies who needs to be tested and when they need to be tested, which is the map that's in the report that DEP has done. Again, this has been an issue, this has been a contamination issue, this dioxide and other issues have been going on for, I believe, close to thirty years. A lot of that has been cleaned up. It's just that what happens over time is the state changes its regulations and they increase the threshold. So something that may not have been within the threshold before, because they go forward and lower the thresholds, then these certain chemicals become more of a concern. So again, there's nothing in the warrant to ask for a betterment, that's an action that the town meeting has to do. Without that, they can't put a betterment on, and I think it's been very clear in the discussions that we've been having with this, is that there will be no betterment tied into it. I don't know what more to say than that. It's just that in order for that to happen, town meeting has to approve a betterment, there's no language in here for a betterment, and this is, again, going back to a remediation issue that needs to be done. With that, DEP has identified the two houses that have been contacted, and I think there's actually, I think, six wells that have been done, that have been sampled, and only two of them came back of something that's close to it, and the town has been in the process, we've been supplying bottled water to one of the houses, and we're waiting to get a bill for the other house to supply bottled water to them. So again, we follow what DEP tells us to do, and this thing has been going on for thirty years.
Yes, sir. Alan made it 148A Plymouth Street. Want to thank Mrs. Shea for hitting most of my points, so I don't bore you all because I think she's a much better speaker than I am. I know all about the history of this, and again, say thirty years, yeah, there's been a problem with enough capital landfill for a long time, longer than I lived here. I used to own part of that property, so I know quite a bit about it, actually, and you're correct, this is a new requirement. I'd like to know when the town became aware this was a problem and why this has been done at that treatment station since 2017. I'm bringing it up in this forum because this is the first I've noticed about it. As Mrs. Shea mentioned, we have bought this property, and in interpreting the warrant item, as far as the board is concerned, it mentions sixteen potentially affected properties. And I don't know what sixteen properties those would be, except for the ones on Plymouth Street and Pine City. So that certainly does put us in that quadrant of not well-standing, if all of the projected line, that would put us there, because that means we're directly affected, even if we're not affected by the quality of water, we have wells, our wells, that's fine. Who's going to pay for this? I mean, so I guess I'd like to know when the town knew about this and why the first we found out about it is a town meeting warrant for expanded.
So to answer your question, sir, this, we, the town became aware of this, I want to say it was last, in 2017, last year, I don't remember the exact date, but it was somewhere around April or May of last year. And with that, we contacted the DEP and the Board of Health, and town officials have been working with DEP to resolve this. Again, as I mentioned, the town had a contractor that had been here for twenty-plus years that apparently was billing the town for work that wasn't being done. And then we identified this, and we've been trying to rectify that since that time. When the budget was put together for the three-hundred-thousand dollars and we were looking at potentially running it down for up to sixteen homes, and that's the sixteen-hundred linear feet, that was the maximum that we thought we would have to do. Based upon where the tests are and our conversations with DEP, we can probably shorten that down, but we don't want to shorten that down too much in case we have to go back, so that's why we're in the process of doing these additional rounds. The point that I want to make is, is at no point has this dioxide one-point-five gone over the threshold that DEP is requiring. It's getting close, but it has not gone over, it's there. So this is a preemptive issue that DEP is requiring us to do so we can close down that pumping facility that cannot treat this chemical. This chemical can't be treated with the equipment that's in there. So that's why allowing and providing and paying for anyone that's downstream that may have a well that may have a higher level, and that well could have also been contaminated through someone's septic system if they washed a lot of laundry. And again, when I say a lot, I mean, like, you're running the thing like twelve times a day. But, so that's why we have the number that we did in here, was a budget number we first started off, and, you know, with all our capital articles and all our articles we do, just because we have the money doesn't mean we spend that, and if we can reduce that linear lag down in half with DEP's consent, then we will. But we can't really come back mid-year and ask for more money, that's why we propose the number that we've done.
Thank you. Mr. Shea?
Cornelia Shea, 148 Plymouth Street, Carver, Massachusetts. So the filtration system for the landfill has been off for a year, and I want to know if this money that we're allocating has or will be used to return it on. I think the filtration for this landfill, considering the amount of contamination problems that it has caused in the past, needs a filtration system, and we shouldn't just ignore it. And I'm curious as to whether any of this money or there is any plans or intentions of turning the filtration system back on.
So, Mr. Shea, I believe I did address that, is that the system that's currently there right now cannot treat this chemical, and the system's been let into disrepair.
Agreed, I understand that.
So there is no intent to turn the system back on. What the intent is in working with DEP is to put this water line on so that that facility can be decommissioned.
Right, but the filtration system, this is an emergent contaminant right now as listed by the DEP, but what about the other contaminants or vectors of carcinogens that were being treated by the filtration system at the landfill? And what is going to happen now? Is there going to be more hydrological changes due to the fact that this isn't running and this is backing up into Muddy Creek, Muddy Pond, and the properties in the area?
So, Mr. Shea, all of the sample test reports, all the test reports are available in the Board of Health, and none of the other tests, to my knowledge, have exceeded or come close to it. The only one is the one-five dioxide, which is the one we're talking about. Everything else is not of any significance, that it's well below any type of standard based upon the test results.
So there's no intention of restarting up the filtration system?
There would be no requirement to start up the filtration system, that's where I put the...
I wasn't asking for no requirements, I was asking, does the town intend to filter the effluent coming out of the Fly Ash landfill in North Carver?
There is no requirement for DEP to do that, there is no budget number set aside for that, there is no budget number to rebuild the plant, it would be... Again, the Department of Environmental Protection has not ordered this to be restarted. What they do want us to do is to put the new water line in. The facility does not treat the chemical that exists now, all the chemicals are not within any type of calculations from DEP.
Mr. Bellman.
Thank you. All right, so I'll keep it on this subject right now, all right? The, Mr. Milonowski said it could be from high people doing laundry or whatnot. They said two properties were tested, but when I read meeting minutes, it said that they tried to do six or eight, and only two people did it, one tested positive, the other tested negative. Were those meeting minutes accurate or not?
There were actually eight properties that we were trying to test. Four were required to be tested, we did test those four. Of those four, two, which were next to the down gradient area where it was anticipated there would be some release, tested positively, it followed the geotechnical report. Again, that report is available in its 59 pages at the Board of Health for your review.
Move your hands.
No, I'm not done yet. Mr. Moderator, there's other sections on here I need to talk about. Okay? I'm going to move on.
There's a multiple question.
So on number E, or letter E, it was really funny, town administrator, the way he wrote that, where it's written here on the E, it says the fire department also received a donation from Southern Sky Renewable Energy, an amount of $30,000, to offset this purchase of this fire truck. So, what I really have a problem with is the word donation. It wasn't a donation by Southern Sky. It wasn't. It was a planning board requirement under three, condition number three, to provide this money. And it goes to the fire department, okay? And they did use that money, this is what I was told, they did use that money to fix this newer engine, so we can get access up to the solar panels, they did use that money. And then, they just want to be reimbursed into their account for their fire department. I just want to make sure that, but the donation part, that's false. That's totally misleading. And I just want to make sure that everyone understands that. Mr. Milonowski, anything to say, hold on.
It's an informational summary, I think we approved your comment.
Okay. All right, and then on the G, what infrastructure are we doing for the North Carver Water District?
Mr. Bellman, this is the, under D, I'm sorry, G, for the North Carver Water District, this is for existing debt, they built the facility.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, I'm Jennifer Bogart, 116 Cranberry Road. Well, it's not as large of a number, I have a concern with part F about the recreation committee. Last year, when the money was allotted, it was used for two people unbeknownst to the recreation committee at all. I was on the committee at the time, it was brought to us and said, "These two people are going to do these things for you, and we're going to pay them a stipend." Like, we were left out of it completely, I've since left the recreation committee. But my concern with the number 20,000 is, what is this number based on? Last year, it wasn't based on the number of hours given, it's kind of pulled out of the air, and it was not done in conjunction with the recreation committee, who could handle it to do more? So, that's my concern, I think the town meeting should know that the recreation committee was left completely out of this decision last year.
Any further discussion on Article 3? Seeing no movement to the mics, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 3 is presented, signified by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Tell us, please, come forward. As the forward's starting out, I just want to make sure that everyone is up in the leashes here. If you're a voter, you need to be down in the front section. If you're an Audac Carver voter, you need to be up in the leashes. If you're a voter, and you want your vote counted, you need to be down in the front section.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Clark.
Make a motion to reconsider Article 3, and if we do, then have the motion made to take these individually. There are some articles here, some of these letters need to be taken care of, so that if there were specific letters that prevented people from voting for the article, I'd like to have them taken individually. So I'll make a motion to reconsider Article 3.
Second. Motion's been made, seconded to reconsider Article 3.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Bellman. This was just straight, pumped and watered, reconsidering.
Correct. That was already, it already went through, I mean, reconsideration is a repoint, I think.
Reconsideration is reconsideration of the article as a whole. Do you have a specific comment, Mr. Corvo?
Mr. Moderator, can I just address the question? The issue before the meeting right now is whether Article 3 as a whole should be reconsidered.
We already considered that.
Excuse me, sir, I have the floor. If Article 3 is reconsidered, it opens Article 3 in its entirety again, at which time, a motion to divide the question would be in order if someone were to so make it, and then this article could be divided into parts. Now, the only portion of this article which requires a two-thirds vote is Part C, which means that if the article were to be divided, the remaining parts would only require a majority vote to be approved. So, these are issues that you should keep in mind in determining whether or not to reconsider this vote.
Yes, sir. Matthew Henderson, 9 Southern Street, Carver. I apologize if I have this incorrectly, but my understanding earlier was that we had voted that in the situation in which it was not an obvious yes or no, that we would have to vote the card selection. And my understanding that the vote for not allowing this to be broken into sections was voted verbally and was selected by moderator to each of the votes. However, we did not vote card holding, from the best of my understanding of this proceeding, it should be put to a card vote, whether we break this up by section, and prior votes do not be counted, because we did not follow those rules that we established at the beginning of this meeting.
No, the portion before this is reconsideration, and we'll speak to reconsideration.
If I could address that? So the, what the general laws require is that if an article requires a two-thirds vote, then a hand count has to be taken unless the meeting orders otherwise. For articles or motions requiring a majority vote, that can be done by a voice vote of the moderators. So, the previous motion to divide the question was a majority vote, so that was able to be done by a voice vote.
I apologize, maybe that's where I'm confused, because is this not a two-thirds vote, and does that not require the hand count, and do we not vote by a voice instead of hand count for Article 3? I believe the same, and I know that people near me have also agreed on that, that we had voted, we did not raise cards for Article 3, or we got the votes off of it, all I see is saying, because that's the motion that was made by Allen, as opposed to the set motion in this.
Right, so the motion to divide the question, or to separate the question into parts, that motion required a majority vote, okay? So that could be declared by voice. The motion under Article 3, taken as a whole, required a two-thirds vote, so that had to be done by card counting. We are now considering a motion for reconsideration, okay, which is a majority vote, so that can be done by voice vote.
Thank you for that clarification, I apologize.
Point one, Mr. Moderator. Did Mr. Clark vote in favor, or did he vote against? I voted in favor, but it's not Robert's rules, anyone can make a motion to reconsider, you don't have to have voted against it in order to make the motion to reconsider.
Our bylaws say we're supposed to follow.
Our bylaws do not say that.
Yes, they do.
No. Well, then, you're overruling town council, and apparently the time you spent in law school was wasted.
You see a question?
Yes, just to regards to reconsideration. Obviously, we have an audicle in here, it was a clerical error. The money was already accounted for by the town, when it was in the wrong council, we couldn't use it, that money is sitting there. So, the vote that was taken was very respected by the body, the law, it was voted down. Although, we have a very important audicle here for the fire department, that puts a severe financial burden on our department if that does not go through. So I ask in any way through town council, if a reconsideration that we couldn't at least vote down one by one, be considered, so, thank you.
I know this, I'm not living in town council, so I request that you, Moderator, that you have the authority to speak this evening. As a department head, you are authorized to speak.
Thank you. Again, just to echo what the chief had to say, in terms of, obviously, the town school special reserve fund is in Form 9 for the school, that is an amount of money that we, in terms of our planning of the school budget, we took that into consideration, if that possibly would be here this evening. So in essence, when we build the school's budget, if we did not have access to these funds, to the special reserve account, we would have to build that access into our budget, if that makes sense. Because the reality is, we don't, this is addressing costs that we don't know if they're going to occur, but on a year-to-year basis, tend to occur. So occasionally, pretty much on a regular basis, there is one, there is a student who may move to the district who requires services. So within our normal budget planning, we would allocate that within our regular budget. When the school committee passed their budget this year, knowing that this would be an article through free cash, we took that into consideration. So this would impact the overall school's budget, if we did not have the ability to reconsider and vote down the entire, if this total items was voted down. So I would also support the concept of reconsidering this motion, and then, you know, if the body wills it, to break it up individually and find some, thank you.
All right, Steve Pratt, 16 Western Street. I would also like to ask for reconsideration of this vote, and quite honestly, if we do reconsider it, I would like to think that we would put together those articles or those letters that require only a majority of vote, and just separate C, which requires a two-thirds vote.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing no movement to the mics, this is a vote on reconsideration. If you vote yes on reconsideration, you're opening Article 3 up to discussion. Not doing anything with Article 3, all you're doing is reopening it for discussion. All those in favor of reconsideration of Article 3, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Clark.
Make a motion that we divide Article 3 up by letters and vote on them individually? Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to divide Article 3 up by individual letters and vote individually. Discussion, Mr. Bellman.
Mr. Clark, you want to use my language that I wrote up here for that one?
No, thank you, boy.
Sign your names, and it needs to be in writing, right? You need to make, in writing, you need...
Could you move ahead?
Okay. So, which one of these letters here requires two-thirds vote?
C.
Just C.
Correct.
Everything else is a majority.
Correct.
Just want to make sure that everyone understands, and we want to do each one individually.
Motion's been made and seconded to break Article 3 into individual letters and discuss it by individual letters. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, so voting unanimously. Article, letter B, Town White Snow and Ice Budget, $100,000.
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the Town School Special Education Reserve Fund. Any discussion on...
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the Town School Special Education Reserve Fund. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voting unanimously. Article, letter B, Town White Snow and Ice Budget, $100,000.
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So voting unanimously. So, voting unanimously.
No. Okay, Mr. Moderator, with the motion being made and seconded, I want to make a further motion on the explanation down below, that we delete everything after G that says "and further" in connection with the transfer and all that language for that paragraph.
Delete it.
For clarification, that paragraph is for the town to accept an easement from any of the property owners. That easement is what requires a two-thirds vote. The actual vote of the $300,000 does not require a two-thirds vote. It's just whenever the town accepts any property, a real property or interest in property, which would be an easement, it would require that.
Second. Okay, motion has been made and seconded. This is a sub-motion. We're going to vote on that sub-motion first, which is to eliminate everything in that paragraph, everything after item G, who states "and further." Ending with the Town Clerk.
Ending with the Town Clerk.
Ending with the Town Clerk.
Yep, one paragraph.
That one paragraph. The discussion, therefore, is only on the elimination of that paragraph. Ready discussion?
Good evening, Mr. Shea, One Forty Eighth Southern Street, Carver, Massachusetts. I suppose this is one way to get the bill passed, but if we're going to start changing the wording, why don't we put in specifically that no betterment will be charged involved in this project? Or hookup fees? Hookup fees regarding any properties that might or might not, in the future, have contamination issues with them?
Mr. Moderator, is Mr. Shea putting that in the form of a motion?
I would prefer to put that motion that we include the language that no betterment fees or hookup fees be charged to any properties that may now or in the future be contaminated by future waste from this project.
We have to take action, take action on paragraphs that we're trying to eliminate first. Then, if you'd like to put it in, make your motion. So, we'll take up action on elimination of that paragraph first. This is an amendment to an amendment. All in favor of taking up the paragraph, starting with "and further," and ending with the Town Clerk on the next page, signify by stating aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it.
This is true.
Call for count, Mr. Moderator. Six hours, six hours for count. Be a down.
Need seven letters.
I'm one.
Okay. Dollars come forward. Let's show everyone's wish, this is a simple majority.
Mr. Moderator, your point of order, there are some people that are confused about what they're actually voting on. So, can we just go over this one more time, so everyone understands what that motion is?
Mr. Moderator, if you want, through you, to the previous speaker. Basically, what my motion is, is under it, where it says G and then total, the next paragraph, "and further," and all that language in that paragraph, which talks about the easements and everything else, up to the next, top of the next page, and ends with said plans on file with the Town Clerk. That would all be eliminated on my motion. Page two, page two under page three of the Town Ward.
Point of order? Katie Johnson, Southern Journal in court. I just would like to, a question for the chair. Would he please explain the reasoning behind that, and why would the second paragraph that begins with "talking to the town administrator in consultation with the Carbon Outlight Committee, dot, 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 be, stay there as a, and why are we not cutting the whole thing? Like, what's the reasoning behind it, please?
Basically, ma'am, that next paragraph allows the town administrator to oversee the spending of the money for the project itself. Has nothing to do with the betterments or anything. Or the easements. Mr. Moderator, if I could, the paragraph that's being removed, and I think it's important for Town Meeting to recognize that, when we start putting the warrant together, we put it together really at the end of 2017. So, out of an abundance of caution, we put in this paragraph in case we would need to have some easements in order to make this line work. So, it was done in an abundance of caution. At this point, because we're looking at potentially only two houses that would need to be hooked up, we don't see that there's a need for this easement. And that's why it's appropriate to take that out. And again, just keep in mind, when these are put together, it's, we're putting together our best estimate at the time. As we get more data, as DEP gets more involved, we're able to narrow that down, and therefore, this particular paragraph is not needed. This particular paragraph is the only component that requires a two-thirds vote in this entire article.
It's a majority for the amendment, and that's what we're counting right now. There's no...
So, we're speaking strictly to the amendment at this point, which is to eliminate that paragraph?
No, we're not speaking. Yeah, you called for a count.
We're addressing specifically that paragraph.
Correct. We're voting on to take that paragraph.
So, since there was some confusion, we'll take another vote on that. This is a simple majority to take the, that paragraph in its entirety out.
Vote again. We got a vote, we got a vote, the ayes had seven months' time for a count. Where did the count go? Where did the vote go?
We're doing the count now.
Okay. It's not a vote.
All those in favor, sit, put your cards in the air.
This is in favor of removing...
This is in favor of removing that paragraph.
betterment for either one, or say, and no charges to the public.
All those in favor, put your cards in the air. Motion to remove that paragraph passes. Now, we turn to Item C, for the DTE waterline extension through the North Carbon Land Trail, for $300,000. This is a simple majority. Mr. Goblen.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to add to this article, no betterment or tie-in fees to any extension of waterline, and the board of selectmen oversee any expenses of money for this project.
Motion's been made and seconded. You didn't write, Mr. Goblen?
It's right here, Mr. Moderator. I want to make sure that no one has to pay anything out of pocket for this, and I want to make sure the board of selectmen are overseeing our monies being spent, and they're being spent the right way. That's what this motion's for.
Steve Pratt, Sixteen Western. With all due respect, this development and all the neighbors that should have been notified that this was going on in the town, way before tonight and the warrant, I would like to question two things. First of all, is the addition of this wording for the betterment going to require a two-thirds vote? And then, second of all, is this amendment to the article within the scope of what this article was intended for, which was to transfer free cash to pay these expenditures? And I question whether or not people have been given proper notice to the amendment about the whole issue of our benefits. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, as it relates to betterments, it is within scope. As was identified and stated in the presentation, there was no intention to do betterments for this project. It's never been on the table, so it is within scope. There's no charges to the public, and if, and if the Town Meeting wants to put that in there, I think it's within the Town Meeting's privilege to do that, and it just reiterates what's previously stated.
Any further discussion? The Article III, Item C.
No, you're voting on the motion to amend first.
The motion to amend and putting no betterment fees and oversight by the board of selectmen. That's, we're voting strictly on the amendment, so that, this is just the betterment fees and oversight by the board of selectmen. All those in favor of the amendment, signify by stating aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? So, voting unanimously. Now, we go back to the Item C, for the $300,000 for the waterline extension.
Moved as amended.
The rule has amended and seconded. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to ask a question before we went to the vote. Would that be okay, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Deborah Giswaldo. I live at 204 Main Street in Carver. We just voted to take out, as Mr. Milonowski explained, a paragraph that he went above and beyond to capture any inevitabilities we didn't know about. So, I'm wondering, because we won't have to purchase or take any properties, was any monies in that $300,000 that would cover those easement purchases that should be lowered?
No, there were not.
Any further discussion? Taking action on Article III, Item C. All those in favor of Item C, signify by stating aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Yeah, the ayes have it. So, voting unanimously. Article III, Item D, permitting G I S tracking software purchase and install.
Mr. Moderator, I move we approve Letter D.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing no movement to the mics, all those in favor of Article III, Item D, signify by stating aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, so voting unanimously. Article E.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we approve Item E as written.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing no further, no movement, all those in favor signify by stating aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Vote is unanimous.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we approve Letter Item F as written.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Jennifer Bogart, again. I did not get an answer to my question the first time about how that number was, was come about. Is there record of how many hours were spent doing this work to justify the requested amount of the stipend that was done last year?
Is the chairman of the Recreation Committee available?
Since, since there is no answer, I would ask if we could make a motion to move this money from Article III, and instead move it to Article IV, Part D, and increase the Recreation Committee's budget to $40,000 instead of $20,000, so the Recreation Committee has direct control.
The motion was out of order?
Then we should just vote.
So, Mr. Moderator, I just want to make this correct. Because the way she worded it, that we were going to use it for another article, that's the part that was out of order, correct? Okay, well, it's really funny, because this article here makes mention of another thing, another article coming back of $800,000 in CPA. So, it's kind of a, it's something beautiful, but not for us. So, how about we do this? We vote this down, no, $20,000.
You're referring to the informational summary, which is just, just that, it's an informational summary. It's not part one.
You're talking about it. You're talking about the article, you're using the article as a method to talk about another article, and that's really what she did and what I did a year ago. So, no matter what, just vote this $20,000 down, we'll make a motion on the other one to increase in the next one.
Mary Ross, vice chairman of the Recreation Committee. It kind of comes out the same, doesn't it? If we take the 20 now and 20 later? I'm not sure what the benefit is. The purpose of this, we started last year, and we did have stipend impositions. And the purpose was to develop programs many of you here have participated in. They are ongoing. We have a number set up for the spring. We are intending to have swimming lessons again in the summer, which have been happening for a number of years. That involves a lot of startup firms. So, I would urge you to vote in favor of this one.
I'm a member of the new, brand new, it's brand new, so I'm still learning, a member of the Carver Committee. There are now five of us serving on this committee, who have been putting in two to four hours every two weeks, working to develop the structure, working to develop, to develop a new program, soliciting, and actually acquiring a lot of volunteer people from, from the Carver, who are actually out there running programs, but no charge to the town to try and bring this program up. We're from scratch, a bunch of parents trying to get this thing together, trying to help open up opportunities from the sports, to theater, to cooking, to dodgeball tournaments, to soccer clinics, right into yoga and science classes. And we have a list a mile long that we've been working really hard to make sure that we have an opportunity to expand, and voting was down would kind of crush it. So, I encourage everybody to vote positively for this.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator, add one more thing, please. To answer Jen's question, we don't have an actual tally of the number of hours. There were, there were too many probably to keep track of. We have met repeatedly, and they are working on an evaluation of those positions from last year.
Mr. Moderator, one thing to keep in mind, is this $20,000 that's in Part F, this is from free cash, whereas in Part, the next article, that's from, I believe, raising appropriate. So, you can't just take this money from $20,000 out of free cash and plunk it into another article. Because what you're doing is by changing that amount in the next article, you're actually changing the calculations of, you know, how we came up with the budget. So, you really need to vote both of these separately, please. Mr. Moderator, members of the Town Meeting, you know, this town, when we started this program two years ago, was an opportunity to try to provide opportunities for children to have summer programs. Our goal...
Our goal with this funding, this one-time funding, is to help create and sustain a recreation program which this town desperately needs. This money helped seed that program last year. This money helped hire some assistants to run the program. This money helped use a, uh, I think it's called, a, a Recreation Me website that actually was able to have people bill through here. This is actually to help all of the recreation programs in, in the town. And living in a town where we have such issues with opioid drugs and other issues, our job really is, when we have the opportunity, is to provide money to create these programs to give kids other opportunities. And the Recreation Committee, Mary Ross has been working on this for decades with no money, and they've been able to do phenomenal things. Now we're trying to subsidize that to help that to grow. So yes, there, there are some people that, that, you know, have some issues with this, but let's really think about what our focus is in trying to help the children, and that's what this $20,000 is there to help do.
Sean Bogart, 16 Granberry Road. I don't have a question about the money going to the Recreation Department, but my understanding is that this $20,000 is some sort of stipend to essentially pay a salary for a few, I mean, one, two, three individuals. And that's where my question arises, is the work that's being done, if that is true, why can't that be done by the committee itself, where this money could go into their budget on the committee and not a, a stipend to specific people?
So to respond to that, that statement, it, it was a request of the committee, again, volunteers that had been working on this for a decade plus, that they wanted to have some, if you will, part-time assistance during the summer to run the program. So they voted as a committee to put together stipends for a few instructors. They do that for, you know, some people overseeing the program, they did it for, um, lifeguards, they did it for a few things, and Mary can go into more detail. But they need help, and they're volunteers. Yes, they're putting in a lot of time, but they also needed some help to run these things. This is, I, I, this is very normal to what goes on in any other town, except that we're just trying to start this program. And when you're doing that, you do need the support to help it. And they were bringing in some assistance, and it's a committee decision, and the committee voted that.
I don't know if it helps, I can answer to that a little bit. Um, there are five of us right now, and between the five of us, aside from Mary, probably putting in six or seven hours a day on the matter, the rest of us are probably two to three hours, um, I'd probably say about six hours a week, if ours, making calls, organizing, trying to find out what different programs we'll need. Um, and unfortunately, being personally full-time employed, it's hard to find the time to do that. So finding someone, uh, that might be able to put in, put in six hours in a part-time job for every single rep program offered, and right now, between the five of us, we've done fifteen or twenty on the list, um, which divides us up, you know, five apiece. This would allocate someone who can coordinate those things, find out what resources they need, collect any invoices from the programs, put them in, I mean, there's just countless hours of organizing involved, that we as volunteers have a lot of, but not enough of.
So if I may, Mr. Moderator, so this is a, a payment for someone to perform a duty, not money allocated to provide equipment and other things for these programs, is that true?
This money is for the committee to choose how they best want to spend it to get the best programs they can do. So if they want to pay for lifeguards, if they want to pay for instructors, if they want to pay for part-time staff, if they want to buy tennis balls, that's the committee's choice to do.
So why wouldn't that money be in the committee's budget in Article Four?
Because the town does not have money in its operational budget right now to fund anything more than it does. This is one-time money that's available, that we used last year to start this program. It's seed money to do this. That, that's why.
I thought maybe you had two separate Recreation Committees. Can you please give me your name and address?
Patricia Donald, 6th and Waldorf. I take it this is one Recreation Committee? But the money's coming from two separate places? That was my question. I don't think it's a question of whether we want to help the kids, that's never a question. We have a great town, but I would just suggest we try to work together, maybe.
My question was not asked. I was on the Recreation Committee for years, and I fully support the expansion of it, that's why I joined it. Uh, there's been talk for, for many years of lots of items to do, um, so I am not saying this money should not be given to the Recreation Committee. I wish there was hundreds of thousands of dollars available for the Recreation Committee. Um, I'm no longer on the committee, yet I helped out with the egg hunt again this year, so I am in no way against it. Um, my concern is the way that this $20,000 for a stipend to be paid again to someone is the way that it was given. It was not presented to the committee, it's not for a position on the wage and salary chart, and it was, I spoke at a board of selectmen meeting last year about my concern with this, and I wish I had the letter I presented to them stating how I was supportive of it, but this was done behind their backs. And if they want to control it, that's fine, but this article does not show that they have direct control.
Move the articles. Any further discussion? Okay, moving forward on this article, the summer recreation program funding in the amount, amount of $20,000 to come from free cash. All those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. So voted.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we approve, Item G as printed in the article.
Motion's been made and seconded to put Item G as, uh, presented in the article. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted.